I'd like to bring the Town of Wappinger zoning board of appeals meeting to board archive, roll call please be.
Mr. Delacorte?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinni?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Galati?
Here. All right, first order of business tonight, the acceptance of the minutes from January tenth, twenty twenty-three. Has everybody had a chance to review?
Yes.
Any changes, revisions, exceptions? I have a motion to accept the minutes as written.
I make a motion to accept it.
Have a second?
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, next order of business tonight is adjourned public hearing, appeal number twenty-one seven seven thirty-eight, area variance, Neil Ryan Blaser seeking an area variance sections two forty thirty and two forty thirty-seven of district regulations in an R forty slash eighty zoning district where no more than two accessory buildings shall be permitted in any one-family resident district. The applicant is proposing three accessory buildings where no accessory building should have a footprint greater than twelve hundred square feet nor a height in excess of twenty feet. The applicant is proposing to construct a forty-one hundred and sixty square foot pole barn, including a twelve-foot lean-to with heat electric for storage of tractor and farm equipment. The pole barn would be forty by forty by eighty square feet with a twelve-foot by eighty-foot lean-to. Therefore, the applicant is seeking a twenty-nine hundred and sixty square foot variance. The property is located at forty-one Didel Road and is identified as tax grid number six three five nine zero three two seven four three one two in the Town of Wappinger. Could I have a motion to open the adjourned public hearing, please?
I'll make a motion to open the adjourned public hearing.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. You're on.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Doing well, thank you.
Name, please.
My name is Frank J. Smith III from the Law Office of Schilling and Smith, and I'm the project attorney for Mr. Blaser, who is with me this evening. I have a brief presentation, but before I do so, I just have a couple of items that I would like to provide to Ms. Ogunti and the board. I could not recall if at the last meeting I gave you a copy of the letter of support from one of Mr. Blaser's neighbors, so I added an additional copy of that. Also, my January tenth submission that you had already received, and I understand that the board conducted a site visit, I did include a number of photographs, bills of sale, and other supporting documents related to the items to be stored in the board.
Sure. Excuse me. Thank you.
As previously stated, my name is Frank J. Smith III, attorney for Mr. Blaser, the applicant. The property is located at forty-one Didel Road, Wappingers. It is known as tax grid number six three five nine dash zero three dash two seven four three one two. The property consists of roughly ten point seven acres and is located in the town's R forty slash R eighty zoning district. The property is also part of Dutchess County Agricultural District number twenty-two. The relief requested this evening is dimensional relief in the form of an area variance to section two forty dash thirty of the Town of Wappingers zoning code. Section two forty dash thirty restricts the number of accessory buildings in residential districts to two. The applicant proposes adding a third accessory building, requiring a variance of one. The code also restricts accessory buildings to a square footage of twelve hundred square feet. The applicant proposes a forty by eighty barn with a twelve by eighty lean-to totaling four thousand one hundred and sixty square feet, requiring an area variance of two thousand nine hundred and sixty square feet. Prior to this hearing, my office provided to the board a memorandum of law, a client affidavit, and supporting documents included proof of inclusion in the county agricultural district and resources related to New York State Agricultural District law and its purposes. Additionally, after our last appearance on Jan- on January tenth, I submitted a letter and supporting documents specifically outlining the distinction between the agricultural district and agricultural exemption, as well as specifics related to Mr. Blaser's agricultural use. Tonight, I have also provided the board with photos of Mr. Blaser's equipment, bills of sale, and registrations, to the extent that we had them, along with further evidence of his agricultural use. The applicant purchased the property in December of two thousand and nineteen. At the time of purchase, he was acutely aware that the property was included within the Dutchess County Agricultural District. Mr. Blaser purchased the property with the desire to establish an agricultural use with his young family, who is also with us this evening. The property is located on Didel Road, surrounded by agricultural use, including a number of large barns and other accessory structures. Due to Mr. Blaser's desired agricultural use, he requires a structure to store certain farm implements and other farm products. Because of this, in July two thousand and twenty-one, he filed a building permit to construct a forty by eighty-foot pole barn with a twelve-foot lean-to. On July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, the town zoning administrator denied the permit. On August ninth of two thousand and twenty-one, Mr. Blaser appealed that decision to this board. Shortly thereafter, our office was retained and submitted the previously mentioned materials in support of his application. As this board is aware, there are five criteria when considering an area variance. First, and most importantly, whether granting the variance will cause an adverse impact to the neighborhood. Next, whether the need for variance can be obviated. Third, whether the variance is substantial. Fourth, whether granting the variance would result in adverse environmental impacts. And lastly, whether the difficulty was self-created. Prior to our argument in support of satisfying the area variance criteria, I'd like to briefly describe the spirit of the New York State Agricultural District law. The purpose of the Ag District law is to protect farm operations within an agricultural district from the enactment and administration of unreasonably restrictive local regulations, unless it can be shown that public health or safety is threatened. The Dutchess County Department of Planning has a number of wonderful resources regarding the benefits conferred to properties within the Ag District, and the planning department's Plan on It newsletter about the agricultural district law was provided to this board. In addition, the Dutchess County Legislature also adopted a right-to-farm law, which is found in section one fifty-nine dash one of the county code. Generally speaking, this law recognizes farming as an essential enterprise and important industry, and declares that the county's policy is to encourage agriculture and foster understanding of necessary agricultural practices. The right-to-farm law also states the purpose of intent of the law is to maintain the agricultural character of the county, to protect the operation of farms, permit the continuation of agricultural practices, to encourage the initiation and expansion of farms, and to promote new ways to resolve disputes concerning Ag practices and farm operations. There is no question that the applicant must comply with the town's zoning laws and avail himself to the administrative remedies offered by the town, hence our application to this board. In this instance, the unreasonable regulation is the limitation on number of accessory buildings and restriction on square footage. Due to the agricultural character of the Didel Road neighborhood, I contend that permitting the construction of this building, there would be no threat to the public health or safety. Regarding the area variance criteria, the board must weigh five factors. Based upon the foregoing, I contend that the applicant meets the criteria of the area variance analysis. First, and most importantly, should the variance be granted, there would be no adverse change to the surrounding neighborhood. On this board, we have a printout of the county tax map, and it may be difficult to see, I don't mind passing it around, but on the tax map in blue are properties in very, very close proximity to ours, which contain large accessory buildings for agricultural use. There's a number of those properties in the area, and in this case, the proposed structure would fit squarely within the character of the neighborhood. Second, the board must consider whether the applicant could obviate his need for variance. In this case, he could not. The applicant's use is encouraged by the county and New York State law, and he requires storage of agricultural implements and farm products. The limitation on the number of accessory structures precludes the applicant from constructing a number of smaller ones, and the property is best served by a larger structure to store items in one place. Third, the board must consider substantiality. With respect to what the code permits, the requested relief is substantial. However, in terms of the structure's square footage in relation to the size of the property, the structure is not substantial. Again, the applicant seeks to construct a thirty-two hundred square-foot pole barn with a nine hundred and sixty square-foot lean-to, kind of like a carport. The property consists of ten point seven acres. The square footage of this barn represents less than one percent of the property's total area. Fourth, permitting the variance would not result in a negative impact to the surrounding environment. The proposed structure is small in relation to the size of the property, and the parcel is surrounded by properties with numerous agricultural structures that are also larger than what we're proposing. The addition of this structure would result in no adverse change to the environment. Lastly, the need for variance was not self-created. As previously mentioned, at the time of purchase, the applicant believed that due to the character of the neighborhood and the inclusion of the parcel within Dutchess County Agricultural District number twenty-two, that he could establish agricultural use. The agricultural use requires construction of this barn to safeguard the equipment and farm products, as well as maintaining a tidy exterior. Additionally, the applicant cannot construct additional smaller structures. For these reasons, I argue that the need for variance was not self-created. Tonight, while the board analyzes the area variance criteria, I respectfully request that you consider the inclusion of the property within Dutchess County's agricultural district. In addition, I contend that when weighing the criteria of the area variance, the benefit to the applicant does not result in any detriment nor adverse consequence to the surrounding neighborhood, and it should be granted. I thank you for the opportunity to make the presentation, and Mr. Blaser and I are available for any questions.
Okay. Well, we've been out to the property a couple of times, right? And we actually were, we were in your neighborhood this past weekend looking at something else. But now, obviously, there's a lot of, you know, other buildings on Didel and larger accessory structures as well. We can see that. As far as yours is concerned, you know, it is a sizable building, but we understand what your potential or what you plan on using it for. You did a good job of marking it. We were out there several weeks ago, take a look at the property for a second time. And you did a good job of marking out the footprint of the building and the lean-to part of it, and showing us how your farm equipment basically fit inside the building and all the pieces of equipment that you would like to put inside that building, you know. You can see that it fit inside the footprint. Your explanation, you know, pretty much goes through the definitions of what our criteria are and what we need to abide by as we're reading through, you know, the different conditions. I don't have a lot of other questions. I know maybe some of the other guys may have some questions for you.
Just clarification, so there will be seven acres of farmable land, correct?
Correct.
And ten thousand in yearly income from farm sales?
Yes.
Which is, my understanding is a criteria to become, you know, basically the definition of a farm.
That's the criteria to obtain the agricultural exemption, to get benefits upon taxes. The farm use is defined by the town code.
Okay. So, I mean, it seems clear that it will be a farm. You know, another concern I think we had was, you know, if this was going to be used for, you know, personal use, you know, and it seems like it's largely farm equipment.
And in the January tenth submission to the board, there were two spreadsheets that represented two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two farm sales. Both of them exceeded ten thousand dollars.
Got it. You did state that the size of our property was ten point seven?
Correct.
Any other questions, you guys?
I don't have any questions.
No, only this barn is going to be used for your farm equipment, not for any rental or anything else, right?
Just for my farm.
Just for what you use on the farm.
Correct. So are yours.
I just wanted to say, Pete, I appreciate I asked for a layout.
You did.
Thank you.
It came out much neater than I anticipated it to as well, so I was very happy with it.
There's a lot more in it than I thought, yeah.
Yeah, and we physically saw it as well.
A question for Lisa.
Sure, yeah.
Are we able to make a condition that the seven acres of farmable land should be maintained on the site? Just, you know, if he sells it, someone tries to subdivide it?
So, the seven acres and the ten thousand dollars, as Mr. Smith indicated, is for the Ag exemption?
Yeah.
Under the code, you can still be a farm without having that acreage? So, what I think, what you're trying to get at is if the use becomes not a farm, you don't want this to be for storage or for other things. Is that correct?
I think that would be, yeah, the condition we'd want to set, you know, if he does sell it and someone, you know, subdivides it and keeps, you know, the house and the garage for their car collection, and this house is on the rest of the property, you know, if there's a way to kind of protect it.
So I think a fair condition might be that it would be the use for the storage of farm equipment, and also that it would not be used for rental to third parties, and those two conditions would probably satisfy, and I assume the applicant would consent to that since that's the stated intent.
I would, obviously, the entire barn, as you see in the footprint, is filled with farm equipment. I, and I think the applicant, would prefer that there be no condition related to the storage of items. I really don't want to get into the minutia of a disagreement of a piece of machinery that may or may not be considered farm use. With that said, we would be totally happy with a condition on not renting out the property, and not to get into the really heavy nuts and bolts of the Ag exemption law, because it's totally separate, but it does provide that if you do farm less than seven acres and show a higher threshold of gross income, that you can still get the exemption. You know, an example would be like an indoor greenhouse that sells exotic plants or flowers or something like that. Obviously, not taking up five acres, but makes far more than the ten thousand dollars.
Got it. Yeah, really, the whole tax exemption issue is basically apples and oranges, right?
It's not, like, in order, a property doesn't need to be receiving the Ag exemption for tax purposes in order to be deemed a farm for zoning purposes.
And I also think that the proposed location of the barn would make it quite difficult to subdivide the property. Not knowing the town subdivision codes off the top of my head, but it would appear that it would likely have to cut in between the house and the barn in order to get your minimum area. So I think that that also serves as a deterrent that it would ever be split and utilized as two separate items.
Any other questions, Pete, ask? Anybody in the audience would like to speak or have any questions regarding this application? Yes. You're up.
We got it.
All right, so there are no other comments or questions. Could I have a motion then, please, to close the adjourned public hearing?
I make a motion to close public hearing.
Can I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, let's move on to a vote, then. Could I now have a motion to grant or deny the applicant the variance? Now, there's actually two variances here, right? There's the variance regarding the number of structures, and then the variance, the size of the structure.
I would do them separate.
We do them separate. Yeah, we should. Okay. So then, could I have a motion then to grant or deny the applicant the variances, and we need to do those separately? I will make a motion to, as far as the number of structures are concerned, I will make a motion to grant the applicant the variance regarding the number of structures. All right, there's really no other feasible means to achieve it. The third structure would not have an undesirable change in the neighborhood. The third structure, now, just pertaining to the number of structures, right, would not a substantial request. Whether the, whether the third structure would have an adverse effect or environment on the neighborhood, it will not. Whether it's self-created, no, it is not. Okay, regarding the application of the size of the structure, okay, obviously, it's a large structure, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, you should.
So you made a motion, can we close that one out? Have a second and then vote.
Perfect, okay.
I'll second.
On favor?
No, I think we got a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to roll call, please.
Mr. Delacorte?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinni?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Galati? Yes. Okay, so the number of structures variance has been granted back here. As far as the variance for the footprint of the structure, yeah, obviously, it's a large footprint, but we understand now of the need, your need, you know, being that you, you know, have all the farm equipment, and you did demonstrate to us, you know, physically, as well as have a drawing on how you're going to fit all that equipment inside that building. I am going to read down the conditions, and I am going to make a motion to grant the applicant the variance based on a few things. Whether the benefit can be achieved by any other feasible means, it might be arguable, right? I mean, it can be a smaller structure, however, you did demonstrate that from a feasibility standpoint, right, a smaller structure would not fit your needs, so that in and of itself would not be enough to, for me, to deny the variance. Undesirable change in the neighborhood, a detriment to near my properties, no. You know, as we demonstrated and spoke about before, there's a lot of larger accessory structures in that area, and actually, some are larger than the one you propose. So there is that. Whether the request is substantial, I believe it is substantial, however, again, the need for you to use that structure for agricultural uses and agricultural equipment, as you demonstrated you need it to be, I, it makes it less substantial. Whether the request will have any adverse or physical environmental effects, no, it will not. Whether, again, the alleged difficulty is self-created, again, is somewhat self-created, but again, that in and of itself is not enough for me to deny the variance. So, all those conditions, I'm being said and read, I am making a motion to grant the applicant the variance.
Are you adding any conditions to that motion?
Yeah, the conditions, I believe, we stated that we would not want you to, or would not permit you to rent or lease out that space for anybody else's equipment. Was that it, Lisa, on the conditions, I think?
The applicant would prefer that you not impose a condition that it be only for farm equipment, and that does get to be a bit dicey as to whether, for example, an ATV is used for farm equipment or not, so it makes it more complicated to enforce, so that's up to the board whether you wanted to impose that, a condition or something like that.
I would impose a condition that it cannot be leased or rented to any other, anybody else's farm equipment, and I would be okay with that.
Or any property, farm equipment or any third-party's property.
Anybody else's property, yes.
We agree to that. Yes.
Okay.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please, be.
Mr. Delacorte?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinni?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Galati?
Yes. So, you, your application has been granted. I did a long vote for you, I know that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate you on this one, and now the fun begins with construction. So the building department will be seeing more of Mr. Blaser, that's for sure.
Now you get to start.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
You as well. All right. You want to stick around, Lisa?
I can't convince her.
Have a good night, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next up on the agenda, public hearing, appeal number twenty-two seven 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 four, area variance. Children's Enrichment Project LLC seeking an area variance section two forty thirty-seven and two forty sixty-two A of district regulations in an HM zoning district where two-point-zero acres is required, the applicant can provide one-point-four acres to allow for a private community or fraternal recreation club, thus requesting a variance of point-six acres. The property is located at two-three-two-one to two-three-two-five Route nine D and is identified as tax grid number six-zero-five-seven-zero-two-nine-eight-seven-five-eight-zero in the Town of Wappinger. Could I have a motion, please, open the public hearing?
Motion, open the public hearing.
Have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. You're up.
You're up.
Brian Stokosa, Dan Stokosa Engineering, we're here tonight for a zero-point-six acre variance to allow the establishment of a fraternal organization on this existing site. The site formerly served as a retail furniture business, and business for a number of years. You have a main principal building where the furniture was sold out of. Slightly to the, to the left and behind it was a two-bedroom caretaker's cottage where the owners lived on-site for the retail business. And then, moving further to the left, there's an old barn garage that was used for storage during, during that retail operation. What the applicant is proposing is just to change the use of the site to support their organization. It's a, it's a member-only club. What they do is educational activities with children and families, farming, gardening, that type of activity. I do have the applicant here tonight to speak more on that, if you wish. But basically, we're repurposing the site to support that operation, but the organization's not open to the public, so it's controlled, members only. operation. The, the organization's not open to the public, so it's controlled members-only. Right now, looking at the parking perspective, we've been working with the planning board. Our concept of parking and how we came up with it was based upon assembly space. So member activities will be on the first floor. That totals roughly a hair over 1,500 square feet. We'll have ADA access in from the gravel parking lot into the building. And then we'll provide a couple of spaces for the existing caretaker's apartment to remain. The caretaker's apartment will be maintained by a member of the organization. Right now, they have six to seven families. This could grow to possibly eight or nine families depending on, you know, their wishes. Looking at infrastructure improvements, we're adding some gravel to the left of the site to support the, the parking delineation. We're showing 18 spaces. 18 spaces are required. 18 is what we're providing. This application has been submitted to the health department. We're on an individual well, individual septic. There weren't too many records of what was in the ground septic-wise, so we worked with the health department to determine that the septic system has to be upgraded slightly to support the additional water use. That application is with the health department and under review. Soil tests have been done on-site, so design has been submitted. Also, working with the planning board, we reached out to New York State DOT regarding change of use and the vehicle entry to the site. They reviewed the site. They determined that no permit is needed for our change of use. There'll actually be a reduction in volume to that site. From an exterior standpoint, we're not making any design changes to the building. We are adding a landscaping berm in front of the building. It's gonna be about six feet wide, about three feet high. And then on top of that, we're gonna have some evergreens spaced to try to give a buffer from vehicular noise into the building. That carries around the side, the right side of the building toward the rear of the property. We're gonna be installing a post-in-round fence with light mesh chicken wire across it. That will continue around the back. Inside, there's no proposed modification to the existing barn. That should remain. If they ever decide to modify that barn, we'll be back in front of the planning board to address that. Other than that, I believe you guys had a site visit, had to the site, and I believe the last time we were here, we had our original plan submitted to you, which showed us a stacked parking configuration. Since that time, working with the planning board, we booked with our plan to the zoning board, and hopefully you saw that at the site visit. We've taken it stacked concept. We spread the parking out, which allows the introduction of a refuse enclosure. And we showed vehicle turning movements for delivery, small box, delivery truck, if need be ambulance, you know, passenger car vehicle. Other than that, I think from a disturbance standpoint, we're not, we're not taking any trees down. We're actually adding trees. We're not disturbing any woodland areas. The, the site in the back used for recreational activities, garden, farming, things like that, activities outside is, is all mown already. So that shot remained. From, from an exterior standpoint, I don't think there's been much of a change. You know, we're taking down the existing commercial signs. There'll be no commercial signage in front of the building. So I think it's an overall improvement of the building and just freshening what's already there.
Understood. We were, we were all out there, you know, took a look. And we met you guys out there as well. Thank you for all the explanations. I, I think they're pretty straightforward. Is, is there any limit, I'm just curious, is there any limitation on the membership, on how many members, or how many members will be there at one time?
So, we, we addressed this with the planning board. Right now, we figured maybe a max of like eight families. And we, we tried to look at a parking concept. And we actually had a parking concept that was actually lower. I think at the time, we were talking about 14 to 15 parking spaces, including the handicap. And then, we kinda dialed back into what's the, what's the actual assembly space that you're gonna be using and what's based upon 100 square foot per parking space.
Right.
So, although we're showing 18 parking spaces, I don't, I think that's a worst case based upon assembly, which is what the, the planning board feels comfortable with, not basing it upon, you know, what the applicant thinks that they're gonna need. So that's why I think with this site plan layout, I think we are parking heavy. I don't foresee it getting to that level, but again, they control the membership and from, from what they're telling me, and they're actually here tonight too, if, if you'd like to hear from them, but, you know, around the eight, the eight member threshold.
I mean, we had, you know, some discussion with you folks out there on, on Saturday. We were there, answered a lot of our questions when we were out there. I don't have any further questions. I would, however, like to state we are in, in receipt of, of a letter from Ronald and Michelle Evangelista. We did receive your, the board has read through it, your, your concerns really in the letter, or more planning board related concerns, not really the, the .6 acres. So it's not the purview of this board to address those particular items. So, but we did, we did receive it and I'd like to make a record that we did and, and read through that. I don't have any other further questions for the, for the applicant. Does any, anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, based on the building itself, how many maximum number of people you expect?
As far as assembly space inside?
Yes.
Well, based upon the assembly space at 100 square foot, you know, per, per parking space, that's how we came up with parking. As far as assembly inside, you know, maximum maybe 20, 25 people at one time if everybody's there.
Barbara, is there any limit on number of people versus area of the building?
There isn't. That would be figured at the change of occupant level. But again, this is, it's not like a store that will always have that amount. The way it's being described, they may have four families at times, maybe five, and there's somewhere they might do something outside. So it's hard to limit it. And they're saying it's child, predominantly child-based for learning and everything. So, eight families, I don't think they have more than 25 children amongst them. They can grow family-wise, so I think we're okay with this at this point.
I did, I have a question at, we had met on-site about the, a number of structures on the site and had a discussion. Are we okay, we're okay with the structures on?
So I looked into it more from your email.
Yeah.
So let's just take them apart. The chicken coop is fine. Chickens, this is more of a commercial area. So in our residential area, you need two acres. So they would've had to apply for a variance for that. The only condition I recommend is that they can't have chi, um, sorry, roosters, which I think I mentioned at the last meeting. We have a great enforcement issue in the town, not so much with the chickens, but the rooster screech for hours on it. And there are homes across the street and nearby, so if they're okay with that, that should be a condition. It came to our attention, there is a shed that's 10 by 10, and I looked at these CO searches and it was not picked up as a violation. And it is not listed as ever having a permit. So I would encourage you, before you go back to the planning board, to open that permit so we can legalize it. It's a small shed, 100 square feet.
Thank you, Barbara.
All right, any other questions? Anybody in the audience have any questions or concerns regarding this application?
Hi.
Just name an address, please.
Marcy Wagman, Altroy Road. I don't really have questions or concerns, but more, I, I just think this is a really imaginative reuse of that property and really complements what the residents see Houstonville becoming. So I actually congratulate the applicants to bring this forward and the investments that they're making, and I just wish them good luck with it. So I just wanted to express community support for this project.
Great, thank you. Thank you for stepping up. All right, there are no other issues or questions. Could I have a motion, please, to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Have a second? All favor?
Aye.
So moved. All righty then, could I have a motion then to grant or deny the applicant the variance?
I'll make a motion to grant. I guess with the condition that they will never be allowed to have roosters, if that is acceptable. The benefit can be achieved by no other means. It is not an undesirable change. If anything, it is a desirable change in the neighborhood. The request is not substantial. There is no adverse physical or environmental effect, and it is self-created.
All right, can I have a roll call, please be?
Mr. Delacorte?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinni?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Gallardi?
Yes. Okay, your applicant has been granted. Free to go. Thanks. Thanks, folks, for, for meeting us last, we, uh, Saturday.
Yes, I second.
All right, boy, I'm gonna need some water right now, please. All right, next up on the agenda, public hearing, appeal number 23777, area, area seven seven five, I'm sorry, area variance. Jeanette Satland seeking an area variance section 24037 of District Regulations in an R20 zoning district where 20 feet to the side left yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 14.8 feet for the legalization of an existing six-foot by 20-foot deck, thus requesting a variance of 5.2 feet. The property is located at 81 Edge Hill Drive and is identified as tax grid number 635803135250 in the town of Wapanger. Could I have a motion, please, to open the public hearing?
I make a motion to open.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
So moved. If anybody here tonight representing this application, step up to the mic. Just name an address, please.
My name is Jeanette Satland, 81 Edge Hill Drive.
Got it. All right, for everybody's benefit, the audience as well as us, just a quick, a quick description of what you need and why you need it.
Sure. So I'm in the process of selling my parents' house. My dad had built a deck, put it on the side of the house, which had brought it closer than the 20-foot allowance. We need to have the deck there in order to sell the house, so we're requesting a variance of 5.2 feet.
Got it. Now, we were out there to see that, stuff here. Got it. We were at a couple places this weekend, so I just wanna make sure I'm looking at the right one this past weekend. Yeah. Again, you know, we were out there, took a look at it, see what you got going on. Pretty straightforward, I think. Guys, I, I don't have any questions for the applicant. Anybody else?
I have no question.
Does anybody in the audience have any questions or concerns regarding this application? Okay, could I have a motion then to close a public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved. Could I have then a motion to grant or deny the applicant the variance?
I'll make a motion that we grant the variance. The variance will not produce an undesirable change in the neighborhood. There will be no substantial detriment to nearby properties. There is no other feasible means, in my opinion, to achieve this benefit. The requested variance is not substantial, and it will not have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. And the alleged, alleged difficulty is self-created, but not enough to deny the variance.
Second.
You have a second? Can I have a roll call, please be?
Mr. Delacorte?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinni?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Gallardi?
Yes. Yes. Your variance has been granted.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda tonight, appeal number 23776, area variance. Franklin Gordo seeking an area variance section 24037 of District Regulations in an R2040 zoning district where no accessory structure can have a footprint greater than 600 square feet nor a height in excess of 20 feet. The applicant is proposing the construction of a 40 by 60, 2,400 square foot detached garage, thus requesting a variance of 1,800 square feet. Where 50 feet to the front yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 35 feet for the construction of a 40 foot by 60 foot detached garage, thus requesting a variance of 15 feet. The property is located at 139 Curry Road and is identified as tax grid number 615701475622 in the town of Wapanger. Could I have a motion, please, to open the public hearing? Have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
So moved. President Linguardo?
Yes. Hello again.
Am I getting that right, Linguardo?
Yeah.
Close enough?
Close enough.
I'm glad, so I've got that, I've heard a lot of restrictions of that. I'm sorry. So just give us a brief description of what you need, why you need it, please.
What was that again?
A brief description of what you need and why you need it.
I'd like to build a garage for personal use, cars and lawn mowers and stuff like that, tools and, uh, seeking a variance to put it on the property. It's a fairly small piece of property, but just, uh, just...
What's your total acreage again? I forgot.
Uh, point, 0.699, about a little less than three quarters.
Okay. So we were out, took a look at what you got going on and what you'd like to do. Now, we, we did have some discussions on moving that building around a little bit, right?
Right.
And possibly changing the size a bit.
Yes.
Now, I did, did we, anybody remember exactly what we were talking about? We were talking about pushing it back so your, 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 your setback variance?
It seemed like we needed a variance in the front.
Was that?
He was aligning with the house, right, so it was... Yeah, I wouldn't need 35 feet in the front if I went a little smaller and moved it back. Yeah, so there's a stakeout, I think, was at 50?
20 by 50?
Yeah, but it was 50 feet back from the property line.
More than 50.
More than 50. So it seemed like we no longer needed that variance.
So, so Barbara, so, you know, we, the, the positioning of the building has changed somewhat, so it would eliminate the need of his setback variance.
Which is good.
Yes. Now, we were advising to think how small you would be willing to go. Right. So where'd you fall on that? Uh, 30 by 40, if that's acceptable for the board. It's 1,200 square feet as opposed to 2,400.
30 by 40 then would be 1,200 square feet as opposed to a 2,400 square foot.
Yeah.
And this is the only structure on the site?
It is. Yes. I, I think for Barbara, the, the, you know, there is like a second curb cut.
Yeah, that should go away. You'd have to figure out how to either come across the property from the other driveways, but you can only have one curb cut.
Okay.
So it's probably not noticed now if it's just like dead grass, but once you put a building up, it'll be very noticeable.
Right, right, right.
Do you understand, right, that you can't have two driveways?
Yeah, somehow or another, I'd have to make that driveway go up that little hill to the garage.
Correct.
Yeah. I, I didn't actually blacktop my driveway yet, which I'm in need of a new one. And the retaining walls are kinda like shot, and I do have a, so I do actually intend to do all that. And I was waiting to see how this would turn out before I made a decision on doing all that work.
Understood. Understood. Okay, so, just in summary, right? So the, the building is now a 30 by 40, and the, the setback from the road is no longer required. The building will be back far enough.
So just for the record, the building will be set back 50 feet from the front property line, which will allow it 50 to the rear easily, and you'll stay at at least 25 to the left side.
Yeah, more than, yeah.
Which you have now.
Yeah.
And that would avoid any future setback variances.
Correct.
Just make sure when you put the building there?
Right.
It's as far back as it's supposed to be.
Absolutely.
Give it an extra point here or there.
As we'll see again, and it won't be...
No, it'll be back.
The variance changes too, please, right, to the area variance changes?
That's correct.
One billion.
600 square? To six hundred square feet, is that what you mean?
Twelve, twelve hundred, so six hundred.
Right.
So the building footprint is now twelve hundred square feet, right? So the variance required is actually six hundred square feet?
Correct.
Okay, we'll get that straightened out when we do so. So any, as far as any questions go, any other questions from the board? No, any questions from, anybody in the audience, any, any questions, concerns? All right, could I have a motion, please, to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Could I have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved. Could I have a motion, please, to deny or grant the application with the changes discussed? I will make a motion to grant the applicant the variance, however, the variance is now for a thirty-by-forty-square-foot building, twelve hundred square feet. The variance required would be six hundred square feet. The building is being placed back far enough where you no longer need a setback variance, so it's only the footprint then that we will be voting on tonight. You got that?
Yep.
Okay. So that being said, the benefit then can be achieved by any other feasible means? No, I don't believe so. Does it create any desirable, undesirable effect to the neighborhood? It does not. Whether substantial, whether the request is substantial, it is, however, you've reduced it substantially, and the board appreciates you working with us. Whether the request has any adverse or physical effects on the neighborhood, it does not. And whether the alleged difficulty suffered created, yes, it is, however, again, not enough for us to deny. So your variance has been granted as modified. Okay, could I, could I have a second, please?
I'll take a second.
We have a roll call.
Mr. Delacorte?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinni?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Gallardi?
Yes. Okay, your variance has been granted.
Thank you very much, Barbara.
You're welcome. Have a good night. All right. Next up tonight is appeal number two-three-seven-seven-seven, area variance. Frank Verity seeking an area variance section two-forty thirty-seven of district regulations in an R forty zoning district where no more than two accessory structures are permitted on a single-family parcel. The applicant is seeking an area variance to allow a third accessory structure. The applicant is looking to add a sixteen-by-twenty-four, three-hundred-and-eighty-four-square-foot prefab shed. The property is located at sixteen Daniel Sevilla Road and is identified as tax grid number six-three-five-nine-zero-two-five-zero-seven-six-four-three in the town of Wapanger. Could I have a motion, please, to open the public hearing?
Motion, open the public hearing?
Have a second?
Second.
So moved.
Hi.
Hello.
Good evening, I'm Joanna Valenti. I am here on behalf of my parents, Frank and Jeanette Verity, because they're unfortunately out of town tonight. But as you said, they're seeking a variance for, for the sixteen-by-twenty-four-foot prefabricated shed. They recently bought their property in the area in order to be close to their children and grandchildren, and the shed will be on a twelve-and-a-half-acre property. This variance is needed because there are already two accessory structures. One is a small, fully open-sided gazebo, which is next to the pool, and the other one is an old horse lean-to. It's open, the whole front side, it was used by the previous owners for two horses. So my parents actually ordered a shed many months ago because they threw a company tough shed, and the company told them that they would be submitting the plans for the building permit and taking, that they were taking care of all of that. And they kept waiting, and nothing happened, so my, the company and my parents, however, didn't realize that the gazebo actually counted as a structure on the property because it's got a hard top. So my parents called the town, and then after having waited many months, found out they needed the variance, hence why we're here. So the new proposed structure will be used as a utility shed for storing landscaping equipment, gardening tools, anything needed to take care of such a large property. The property being so large has a relatively small house, and the garage is used for the cars parking. And there's no other storage. There was originally a shed in the front yard of the building, of the property before they bought it, but the old owner had the shed taken down because it wasn't actually allowed to be in the front yard, and I guess that would have been its own variance that he didn't wanna go through. So because of all of that, I don't think there would be any neighborhood impact. You can't even see where it is from the yard, from the road because it's so large, so that's it.
Connor, thank you. And we were out there, I'm sorry, take a look, did you get a chance to take a look, David?
Yeah, what about this one?
Very unique property.
Yeah, it is, it's cool.
It's very nice. We saw where the shed's gonna be, and it's, you know, pretty far back, yeah, from the road, for sure. And I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just saying it's huge, you could probably find it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it was a beautiful piece of property. I didn't have any further questions, pretty straightforward. You know, thanks for taking us up on the property and showing us where it's gonna go and all that good stuff. You guys have any other questions?
I don't.
Other than it is twelve acres, right, twelve point seven acres?
Yes, yes, I think it's twelve, six, five, something like that.
All right, anybody in the audience have any questions, concerns regarding this application? All right, then, could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
So moved. Could I have a motion then to grant or deny the applicant the variance?
I'll make a motion to grant the variance. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. There's no substantial detriment will be created in nearby properties. There is no other feasible method available for you to pursue to achieve the benefit you seek other than the requested variance. The requested area variance is not substantial. The proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. The alleged difficulty is self-created, but that's not enough to not grant, so I make a motion to grant.
All right, have a roll call, please, B?
Oh, I second.
Second? And roll call, please.
Mr. Delacorte?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinni?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Yes. Right, your variance has been granted.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Good luck.
All right. Next on the agenda, discussion, appeal number two-three-seven-seven-eight, area variance. Julius Morton seeking an area variance section two-forty thirty-seven of district regulations in an R twenty zoning district where fifty feet to the rear yard property line is required. The applicant can provide forty-eight feet for the construction of an eight-foot-by-ten-foot deck with stairs, thus requesting a variance of two feet. Where twenty feet to the side yard left property line is required, the applicant can provide twelve point five-two feet for the construction of the eight-foot-by-ten-foot deck with stairs, thus requesting a variance of seven point four feet. The property is located at twelve Fox Hill Road and is identified as tax grid number six-two-five-seven-zero-one-four-zero-three-eight-two-zero in the town of Wapanger. Anybody here tonight to represent this application? Step up to the mic.
Good evening, Chairman, good evening, board members and staff. Julius Morton, I'm the owner of twelve Fox Hill Road in Wapengers, along with my wife, Sabina.
All right, so we have a brief description for anybody who's listening in and are us of what you need and why you need it.
Myself and my wife bought that property, twelve Fox Hill Road, in 2015. It's a residential property, one-family property. On the rear, the rear of the house structure, there is a existing deck, which was put up by the previous owner, and that deck extends the width of the rear of the property. Or the rear of the house structure. There are two exits, two rear exits from the house that exit into the backyard, and you can access the backyard through that existing deck. The deck is approximately about twenty years old, it's in need of, to be demolished, it's a safety issue, it's falling apart, it's a wood deck. So we would like to demo that deck, take it down, and then replace, instead of having one full deck, a smaller fit of two individual decks at each at one of those rear entrances to the rear of the house. The, there was a variance for the original deck, and we would be, for the variance for the left side of the property, where we're asking for seven point four-eight feet. That would be the same variance that was granted to the existing deck for the previous owner. And in the variance that we're requesting, approximately two feet for the rear of the property line. That, I'd just like to note that there is no neighboring entity or structure at the rear of the property. I believe that's county, we are but county property, so there's no adverse effect to a neighbor to the rear of us. And I feel that there's no substantial variance request here, and there's no impact to the character of the neighborhood or to any neighbors or existing properties that are on the side of us.
Fire alarm or something.
Gotcha. Now, Barbara, since there is an existing variance, we still, we still need to do a variance for that?
It's new.
It's new? Oh, you follow me?
You know, if you didn't need the variance for the rear of the property alone, but since it's going to be new and it's just re-arranging, it's just, you know, going forward, it just keeps the file.
Gotcha.
Yeah, that's good.
Everybody's benefit. Have a nice, clean, clean file.
Understood.
It seemed pretty straightforward to me. We do site visits, you know, and we'd like to come out and take a look at the property. We would do that not this Saturday, but the following Saturday, which would be which would be two-eleven, right? Is that all right with you?
Yes, we invite you, the board, to come and make observations, take the assessment.
We usually get there around nine o'clock that morning. It'd be great if there's some way that you could demark the property lines.
Yes.
If there's any, is there a fence, a line, a chalk line, something?
Excellent.
So we could get an idea of where that is in relationship to the deck.
Of course.
Not to get too crazy with it. Any other questions you guys have?
We're just gonna comment on the neatness. I'm a stickler for neatness.
Neatness counts, right. Thank you.
Here, most times, difficult to read.
Just question on the deck, eight-by-ten deck, two separate decks, right?
Two separate decks, 'cause there's two separate rear entrances into the rear of the property.
So one deck need side variance, other one need back, backside variance of three feet.
That's correct.
Got it, understood. Okay, all right, so what we'll do is we'll set a public hearing date as well. That public hearing date would be on the following Tuesday, which would be, oh, that's right, we may change that, isn't it? That's the fourteenth. Yeah, we didn't officially change that meeting date, right? So, yeah. I said, you guys, you guys were, we were debating on moving the next zoning board meeting would be the fourteenth of February. So it may not be the best night to have, have a board meeting. We were thinking either, you know, pushing it to that Wednesday or Thursday. Does anybody have any preferences?
Thursday, I'll be in the city, so it's totally from the back. Wednesday would be better.
Wednesday would be better? The fifteenth?
Yeah, I would be over there, okay, listen.
I have a meeting Wednesday.
Got Wednesday?
I have a meeting.
Okay. We're gonna have to make that a really quick meeting.
We're gonna make it quick.
All right, so we're gonna leave that then, so we'll set your public hearing day for the fourteenth, the fourteenth, and B probably has a little sign for you.
No, I wasn't sure of the date.
Oh, okay. That would do, you'll take that, that needs to go in the front yard. No other questions here, you're all set, and we'll see you on the eleventh.
See you on the eleventh, thank you. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Some homework to do, right?
All righty, last but not least tonight, appeal number twenty-three-seven-seven-seven-nine, area variance. Karen Garrawal seeking an area variance section two-forty thirty-seven of district regulations in an R eighty zoning district where forty feet to the side yard left property line is required. The applicant can provide two point one feet for the legalization of a garage and bathroom, thus requesting a variance of thirty-nine point seven feet.
Thirty-seven point nine, it's tight over there.
What's that?
It looks like thirty-seven point nine, it's tight over there.
Oh, yeah, you're right, yeah, the math is wrong on that. Barbara? So that would be thirty-seven point nine. Make a note of that, thirty-seven point nine feet. The property is located at twelve Schlichter Road and is identified as tax grid number six-one-five-six-zero-two-nine-eight-six-six-nine-seven in the town of Wapanger. Anybody here tonight to speak on behalf of this application? Step up to the microphone, please. Did your name for the record?
Hello, everyone, hello, members of the board, town of Wapanger. My name is Nathaniel Gooden, I'm representing the client, Karen Garrawal, I work for Caesar Engineering.
Got it.
You've been here before.
So, yeah, you look familiar. And it would, it seemed like last time you heard that, it was a whole lot more reading to this discussion. So what exactly has changed?
Yeah, so, you know, going from the momentum that we had from last meeting, which granted, we were able to clear up a lot of other issues, and, you know, we were able to go on a path forward. One of the issues that remained was the garage, the garage to the left side yard. And so, just based off the feedback that we got from the board, specifically into the, for the garage, we're addressing the point of that most of the board said no to, deny to approving the variance that was, that was asked for, which was zero feet to the property line, being that they saw it and the garage hung over. But based on the meeting minutes, the board would, would entertain us coming back to the board if we could show proof of, you know, what could be done and in relation to the property and what were the implications. So the client wanted to do that, so we worked with the client to figure out what would be a way to comply. And so some things that, just to update you guys on, based off of that, and let me just bring up my notes here. So in our new submission, what we're doing now is we are simply saying, or marking out, going back two point one feet to the side. We're coming here today to discuss an amenable way forward. It's not, we're not stuck on two point one feet, we're just starting with the most conservative cutback of the property, taking it off the property line and putting it flush with the bathroom wall, which is on the plan. I would like to point out in a few things of the implications of why this would be the best option for the client. Being so that the property existed, has existed like this for a number of years before the client purchased the property, dating back to photos that are on the town's website, showing the garage and showing other features of the site, and also historical aerials, showing the garage and other features. The, with this, I just want, and I believe you guys had the cover letter, but I wanted to read it out for the record. Mr. Garrawal wishes to comply with his eBay decision, that was granted, that was mentioned last time, but unfortunately, the complete removal of twelve feet of his entire home would incur significant demolition and construction costs, as well as a detrimental loss of value to the property. The loss of twelve feet of his property also means the loss of the only bathroom for his residence. It's a two-bedroom residence, and it's the only bathroom on that side. The removal of twelve feet and his, and his primary bathroom would diminish Mr. Garrawal's home to an uninhabitable and undesirable parcel. And I want to interject there where he's currently at one thousand two hundred twelve square feet. And so the minimum dwelling unit size for the district is twelve hundred square feet. So if we cut back any further, we're going to build a not, we're gonna actually incur a non-conforming unit because it's gonna be less than twelve hundred square feet if we cut into the bathroom, which is diminishing his livable square feet. So further reading of this, this would also negatively affect the character of the surrounding neighborhood. I would, I would suggest, because you're gonna have an odd-shaped cut So further reading of this, um, this would also negatively affect the character of the surrounding neighborhood, I would, I would suggest, because you're gonna have an odd-shaped cut on this person's property. Um, making it less than twelve hundred square feet, which is less than the district minimum for, uh, units. And also, I would just point out that it deters a family from wanting to move to a property like this, when now there's no bathroom and now the owner, or new owner, has to figure out a bathroom situation. But also, it's gonna be a very long and oddly shaped unit, which is not characteristic of the, the neighborhood. The problem with this unit is the lot lines, that's, they're really, you know, going from the street, they're lines that people cannot see who are touring the neighborhood. Um, but they can see the house. And the house, having a cutback in it, will be a, a big variance from the character of the neighborhood. So with that being said, um, it should be of note that the extent of the garage, utility room, and bathroom existed prior to Mr. Garrawal's purchase of the property in two thousand three, as I mentioned, and also confirmed by the nineteen ninety survey. Mr. Garrawal has worked with us to find an amenable solution based on his ZB decision. He can alter his garage and utility room wall two point one feet back, uh, which is going to incur construction, uh, which we will work with him. He's gonna have to move his foundation, he's gonna have to, uh, move his soffit and roof line. But now he's not cutting over into the main structural portion of the roof of the home as well. Uh, the costs, I would say, are going to be exponential as the further you move, setting back twelve feet as well. Um, it will only go up because now you're not moving a foundation, one feet to the side where there's excavation stuff involved, you're now moving it in the middle, and now have to excavate around everything and also re-support it structurally. So with that being said, um, we're here today to, just to work with you guys to find a solution that's, um, that's a good path forward for his residence, uh, just to help him and also the future character of the neighborhood. So it would be great to have the two point one feet setback, which is flush with the bathroom wall. Um, but I would like to discuss that with you and see what we can decide on.
Yeah, understand, I see, I see what you, what you have in mind, and, uh, I totally understand that if you go any further than that, you know, and you start digging deeper and deeper into the home, basically. You know, the, the demolition and the reconstruction possible, skyrocket, understood? The only thing I'm not, and I, and I get all that, the only thing I'm not understanding, Barbara, that I thought there were, there were several variances, right?
You granted all the other ones.
Except for one. We took here, well, and the rest.
So I think there were six or seven variances, you granted someone. You granted everyone but this one.
Except this, right.
Yes.
Thank you for refreshing my memory. Got it.
Um, the, the roof would still be hanging over, correct, or are you proposing paying the roof back to the line of the wall?
No, the, the roof would come off the property line. We would go back and we would still have to cut into the house in this proposal.
So the roof will be also at two point one feet?
Yes, so it would be a zero, it would be a, I forgot the term for it, but...
Do you have to hang over?
Yeah, there's like a zero clearance with the soffit, there wouldn't be an overhang anymore.
No.
It would be wall, roof, at two point one feet back.
If you remember, what over property line, they're talking about bringing it back to make it flush wall.
Correct. Correct. Yeah.
So, so this dash red line, you'd pull everything back to that dash red line that we're looking at?
Yes.
Understood. Got it. I know you guys, you're, you're gonna have to go out and take a look.
If you remember, there were seven variances, at least seven variances, right? On the last one, we granted six of the seven, and it was just the one.
There were, yeah, there were many.
Yeah, it was a very odd sight.
Yeah.
Can I just point something out that I didn't see before? On the last page, there's a, a survey...
Yes.
That, I'm looking at the neighbor, deck is within four point four feet of the property line, it's forward of this house.
True, yeah.
And the shed is even closer. I just think, when you look at this house, you should take in consideration the neighbor. These homes were built prior to zoning, so neither house would have ever been built on these skinny little lots when zoning came in. But I think it, you've been out there, so just to keep that in mind, that the neighbor is also on top of the property line.
Right, yes.
So it just, it puts things in perspective, you know, just to keep that in mind when you're looking at this.
This neighbor came and talked to us all, so.
Yes, I, I don't wanna mention, you know, other neighbors' affairs.
Well, no, we, so part of the variance is taken in the character of the neighborhood. And this did not really stand out to me in the prior, you know, probably wasn't shown on a prior survey. So this survey is very telling there, and I just wanna put that on the record.
Sure.
The gentleman next door is on top of the line as well.
Yeah, you have properties there, or...
But yeah, it is like four feet or five feet.
Yeah, it says his deck is four point four, and then the shed looks even closer in one corner.
I'll take another look. Might be worth it.
The user's seen everything's dead, right?
Yeah.
I, I would say ideally it would be great if we could just alter the soffit, but that would be asking for a greater variance.
Say that one more time, can you say that again?
It would be ideal if we could just alter the soffit back to his wall without touching the foundation. So when you guys do take a look, and in our cover letter, I have photos, I don't know if you guys saw that.
What would that variance be?
Um, that very...
Zero.
Would that be the zero variance?
That variance would be, let me just go here, sorry, apologies. Um, that would be a point nine, so it would be point nine feet back from the property line, which would be a variance of, um, thirty-nine point one feet.
Got it, yeah, I understand.
But that would reduce his construction cost significantly, I'll just point that out.
I'll tell you what, it, it, you guys, I think we should, we should go out and take a look, to see what we're talking about.
What, what is the two point one feet then, if we're, did, two point...
That's what they're willing to do?
They'd be willing to do two point one, but it'll cost a lot of money, he'd rather do point nine.
Because he has to put a new foundation in.
Gotcha. Right, you gotta move the whole wall to get to two point one. Right, you just have to modify the soffit to get to the point nine. Gotcha. Lot less work.
What year, excuse me, what year was the garage put on the building? I know it's kind of been a hodge, hodgepodge.
The garage, so all I can see definitively, it was before two thousand three. Um, and there's a, a bit of historical aerials from the tax parcel access, that you can see the garage. Um, I will say, I, we believe it's actually, but prior to the nineteen ninety survey, which, uh, was also provided.
A look on the aerials?
Yeah, I don't have a definitive answer.
So we never got a permit either, so...
No, and that was the homeowner prior.
The, the, the minimum housing area, does that include the area of the garage?
Excuse me, what, say that, say that differently.
He, he mentioned that if, if they throw it off, it'd be below the minimum required area?
Right, but again, the house predate zoning.
Yes.
So that's in the code, so say somebody wanted to build a tiny home today in Wappinger, the minimum is twelve hundred square feet. So, but we have a lot of homes that are below that as cottages from the day that we turn into home, so you can't go back on something pre-built, so that would be going forward.
That twelve hundred square feet is not including the garage.
It's not including the garage.
Yeah, livable area is only...
Right, so the garage is not considered, it's not habitable space.
Yep, including the garage is, it's around fourteen hundred square feet total.
So if you cut the bathroom and the rest of the house, no garage, would you be within the requirement?
Yeah, you would be below twelve hundred and you'd have no bathroom, or utility room, so.
Cause my, my recollection from the last conversation was that it seemed as though the garage and the bathroom were built without a permit.
They were. I don't know where the bathroom was before.
Yeah.
But it was, there was extensive remodeling, moved around. This probably was one of those cottages, and that, that area had a lot of cottages. So if the garage was taken back down, you would still have the house.
If the garage was taken, taken down, you still had the house, however, the bathroom is on that wall.
Right, and they, so in the bathroom, without taking that wall down, you do get the two point one.
I, i- is the bathroom already at two point one?
The back wall.
Yes, so the, the, the back wall on the plans provided, the, the back wall, the, the bathroom back wall is at two point one, yes, yeah.
So if the garage, I'm just throwing that, the garage was removed entirely, it wouldn't, you would only need the variance for the bathroom, which is at two point one.
Yes, and you, but you would have a, a very weird jog of this bathroom jutting out now.
Without, without garage.
Yeah, without the garage. I mean, at that point, if you're two point one feet back, then from the front, you're gonna see a wall, so it could either be the bathroom or it could be the garage.
And garage is not considered living space, which is twelve hundred.
No, it's not habitable space.
So...
There's a lot of houses without garages.
But also, does not consider it a part of twelve hundred counting anywhere, anywhere. It's not living space.
No.
Yeah. So I think we'll do a, uh, we'll do a site visit again on the eleventh.
Okay.
We'll be out there probably around nine twenty. There's really no need, I don't think, for anybody to be there. If they've been there before, we get a pretty, pretty good idea what it's all about.
Would it be worthwhile to look in the garage?
Was that?
Would it be worthwhile to look in the garage?
Yes, I think it definitely would.
I'm just saying it might be worthwhile.
Do you know? Have access to the garage?
Right, I'm asking, do you know if we'll have access to, to the garage?
I can talk to the property owner to get you guys access.
Uh, I mean, is garage open? Can you see the structure if you look up? Or is there a drop ceiling?
Um, well, I, I don't recall, I, I can't recall off the top of my head. If they Joyce, you're talking about the rafters that were exposed? I can't recall that, um, but I could verify and get back to you.
Sure, that's fine.
Would you guys want access on the eleventh, you said?
Yeah, if we could, yeah.
Okay.
We'd definitely go in on the eleventh, if we could get in, great.
Okay.
And we're gonna schedule a public hearing for the fourteenth as well.
Okay. And I, I would like to ask, is there any other supporting information that you guys would like before now and then? Um, you know, could even debate this at length, so I just wanna make sure that we're doing our due diligence to help you guys come to the decision.
No, I, I, I don't think so. I, you know, we, we, we probably, we beat it up pretty good last time you were here. You know, so we went through all that, that good stuff. This is pretty straightforward. Now, we just wanted, I think, get a look, just refamiliarize ourselves with, with the site and what it's all about. But as far as the other info, I think we did it.
Okay, and, and just, um, another question is, um, you know, with the public hearing, what, my intent with, our intent with coming back here was to think about the distance, so we could ask for a, um, acceptable variance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when that public hearing comes, uh, you guys are gonna vote.
Correct.
So I'm...
Most likely.
Yes, so, um, if we're not at an acceptable back and forth in that, would we just adjourn the meeting?
So, so, just for your question, Pete, you're away the fourteenth, correct? You're away the fourteenth?
Oh, you know, I thank you for reminding me where I am.
That being said, um, you may not want them to vote if there's only four members. So they can close the public hearing, but they can always adjourn it to another date if you wanna have full board. Or you can ask for the, not to do the public hearing on the fourteenth and do it on the second meeting. I mean, that's, you have options too when...
Yeah.
You do that.
Okay, I mean, it probably makes sense for the full board to...
That, that's up to you, just from your question just now. They don't have to vote after they close the public hearing, they have sixty-two days, or what you're comfortable with.
Okay.
Should we adjourn it out further?
Yeah, I mean, you could have, we could have the, the meeting on the fourteenth, not have a vote, just postpone, close the public hearing like Barbara said, and then have you again at the subsequent meeting, and it would be purely just a vote.
Okay, so, uh, on the next meeting on the fourteenth, we could come back and just discuss, cause you guys would have done your site visit, the four members that would be here.
Mm-hmm.
So we discuss, and get some feedback from you guys.
Sure.
Right? And then on the following meeting, we could, we're probably at that point ready for a vote.
Sure.
Hopefully.
It's, it's all, you've proposed like have two options, right? You propose the point nine and the two point whatever?
Right.
Uh, i- is there any other contingency plan if, uh...
Um, the contingency plan is, it's cutting deeper into the property, which is, that's, we don't wanna do. Um, but number one would be point nine, would be great. Um, two point one, two point one would be, you know, you have to...
Acceptable.
Acceptable, and we have to do what we gotta do. And then further than that would be like, all right, we're getting to work, and we're sweating a lot, so, yeah.
All right, all right, so then we'll do that, all right? We'll have, we'll see you on, uh, the next, well, we're, we're gonna be out there on the eleventh, site visit. We'll set, uh, schedule the public hearing for the fourteenth.
Okay.
And then we'll, 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 uh, go from there.
Okay. And then we'll, um, go for a vote, we'll adjourn on that fourteenth into a later meeting for...
Yeah.
Okay.
We can do that. We, we can make that decision that night.
At that night, okay, yes, yes, okay, yeah, okay, all right.
All right? You're free to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a good night.
Yeah, you too.
Barbara, just a, a quick question before we adjourn. Uh, Tommy asked me before the meeting to step down as vice chair and have John step in as vice chair. Do we need any official action?
Just, just make a vote, somebody motion to, I guess, elect John as vice chair, or maybe you, and then just formalize it. The town board would like to know who the vice chairs of both boards are.
Sure. All right, so I'll make a motion then to appoint Mr. Lorenzini as vice chair, you have a second?
Second?
All favor?
Aye.
So moved to the vice chair. You get the big mic, oh, no, you don't.
I have a question.
Does we need to know?
Wait, can we adjourn it?
We have this letter, no, we have this letter up here from, here, Mr. Galati. I'm writing to you, zoning board of appeals concerning Jason and Mary Gordon's variance.
All right.
What does that one, how does it say?
I, I, I didn't see that letter.
Did anyone else get this letter, or is it? It was here underneath all the papers.
That matter is done and closed, finished.
Let me see.
All right.
Correct.
Why don't we close the public hearing? I mean, close the hearing.
Does B need to know, um...
Yes.
Our vote?
Yeah, B would.
Oh.
What, what happened?
They motioned to appoint John vice chair, everyone was in favor.
Everybody, everybody's here.
Okay.
All right, so I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
You have a second?
Second.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, so...